We're ready?
All right, 6:30, why don't we do this? I will call the January 5th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Commissioner Harris, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Okay. Next agenda item is election of officers. We are now going to be nominating for the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Do we have any nominations?
I'll go ahead and nominate, if that's okay. So we'll nominate here for the next Speaker of the House. Oh, sorry, the Planning Commission meeting, so we'll get it done a lot faster here. For our Chair, I would like to nominate our current Vice Chair, Curtis Elmore. For Vice Chair, I would like to nominate our current Secretary, Commissioner Mark Rosin. And for our Secretary, our fellow Commissioner Sarah Klostermeyer.
Okay, do we have a second?
No second is required, we just confirm whether there are any other additional nominations?
Any other nominations? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, if we could get public comment as well.
At this time, I won't go ahead and open up the public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Okay, call for a vote.
Okay, I will now take a roll call vote. Please respond with aye or nay when I call your name. Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Elmore?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosin? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Chair Elmore, Vice Chair Rosin, and Secretary Klostermeyer.
All right, congratulations, everybody. Thank you. All right, this time we'll take public comment. Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item. Request for continuances, staff, any requests for continuances?
Chair Elmore, no, there are no requests for continuances.
Okay. This is the next item, item number seven, consent items. Item number two, the meeting minutes of November 3rd, 2022. Would anybody from the audience like to comment on this? I'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with Mr. Moser's edits.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, moving on, item number three, Ark Balboa Island CUP and Coastal Development Permit, site locations at 224 Marine Avenue. Staff, do you want to proceed with your presentation?
Good evening, Chair Elmore, congratulations on your new post. And Commissioners, Ben Zadiva with the Planning Division. I'll provide you a brief presentation, and I'll let you know that we do have the applicant or operator of the restaurant, Marin Howard von Blum, present to provide a brief presentation after me and answer any questions. So diving in, the location is on Balboa Island. I wanted to show the entire island to give you a better sense of how it falls near the heart of the commercial portion of the island. It's at the corner of Balboa Avenue and Marine Avenue, or near the corner, rather. Jumping back out to see the land uses, it's really hard to see the color, and I apologize for that, but good thing I have a black box to show you. The different commercial areas that are located on Balboa Island, you've got mixed-use designation, and those are the commercial portions, or where commercial is allowed, rather, on the island. So more closely, you'll see that the site is located on Marine Avenue, and it is designated to mixed-use water-related, which does allow for a restaurant with a use permit. Right behind it, across the alley, you do see the RBI, or Residential Balboa Island designation, which is intended to permit single-family and two-family residences. So existing conditions, this is what the property looks like today. It's 2,250 square feet in terms of lot size, 1170 for the two-story non-residential building. It's historically been occupied by retail uses. In the back, you'll see the rear photo on the bottom there, there's an unstriped open area that looks to be used for parking and trash disposal and pickup. So the applicant's request is to demolish the building that I just showed you, construct a new non-residential building, and establish a new restaurant within that building, Ark Balboa Island. It would be 999 square feet of outdoor customer area with 34 seats. And yes, there is no interior customer area, it's all outdoors, so it's a garden, open, alfresco concept. With beer and wine, type 41, so that is for an eating place, they're predominantly a restaurant, it's not that they can just sell alcohol by itself. There is an earlier 10:00 PM closing hour, which respects the location near residential, and there is no live entertainment or dancing proposed. As part of the request, obviously being a small lot, the applicant is requesting that all required parking is waived, and we'll dive into that further on. So as far as required entitlements, we've got a coastal development permit. This is located in the coastal zone to evaluate the demolition and construction that's proposed, the change of intensity and use, the parking waiver, and also the conditional use permit to establish the restaurant and to waive the parking. So I wanted to start by showing the proposed building, so here's the site. And that just shows the footprint of the proposed structure. You'll notice in the gray area, I'll try to use the mouse, at the front here, this is a first-level outdoor dining area that is uncovered. And here's where the second deck dining area begins, and I'll show more plans on the subsequent slides. Here's the back of house, and back here, you've got a trash enclosure, an electrical mechanical equipment room on the alley. So going to the floor plans, here's the first floor plan. I'd like to show the net public area floor plan because it doesn't have all the dimensions on it, so you'll see the shaded area to the left, that is the customer dining area on the first floor. At the rear, in the blue, you do see a trash enclosure, fully covered and enclosed, which meets our current standards. And then the rest of the unshaded area is back of house, kitchen, restrooms, including an ADA restroom, as well as ramping and landing and stair areas. At the second level, that curving staircase goes up to a second-level dining deck, so again, the net public area is shaded. I apologize, I forgot to unshade this area here. I'd like to point out there is an elevator lift proposed to provide access to that second deck, or that second-level deck as well. I did call out the approximate 13 and a half-foot setback from the front property line on Marine Avenue, so that does give you some relief as far as the building is concerned, pulls the massing away from Marine Avenue on the second level, and respects the charm and character of Marine Avenue. Proposed building elevations, these are a little challenging to discern because of the variation in elevation, but the applicant did prepare some artistic renderings that I'll show you right after. But I did want to highlight, down here on the bottom, these blue shaded areas are CMU walls that will flank either side, and it's notable that, being this is a non-residential property, it does have a zero-foot setback. Those walls are up to the maximum height limitation for a flat roof, they're not exceeding, so essentially you could build a structure there that would look very much the same as what you're seeing in the side elevation here. Those walls are intended for noise and sound attenuation to help deflect some of the sound away from the adjoining residential units on the mixed-use developments to either side of the property. Additionally, it's notable that the second-story mass in the middle of the property will help deflect some of the sound away from the residential units across the alley behind the property. So everything should be contained in the front, is the point. Here's the artist's rendering, this is giving the look and feel of that front elevation. This doesn't really give you the sense of relief, but you'll see that here in this additional rendering. Again, pulling back and then having the second-level deck come out up to 13 and a half feet. This is, again, an artist's rendering, there will likely be railing required from ABC, maybe some additional changes, but I did think it helps show the look and feel of that front elevation. So diving into the characteristics of the restaurant, 1,102 square feet, which conforms to the .5 floor area-to-land ratio allowance. Again, there is no interior net public area, there is about 1,000 square feet of outdoor net public area or outdoor dining area, 34 seats, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily, that does not constitute late hours. Live entertainment is not proposed, nor is dancing. And again, there's a type 41 alcohol license proposed. I will note that without a parking waiver, this type of restaurant would be a minor use permit that would go before the zoning administrator for action. So because of the parking waiver, it's a conditional use permit, and it comes before the commission for consideration. The current retail use in the building requires five off-street parking spaces. The proposed restaurant, if we were to apply a rate of one parking space for every 40 square feet of net public area, would require 25 parking spaces, which is a net waiver of 20 off-street parking spaces. As demonstrated in the attachment number four to the staff report, there were parking surveys prepared for neighboring restaurants that had similar conditions, many of them have more seats, they do not have onsite parking, and it was a survey to see how patrons and employees access and get to and from the site. That survey or those surveys were analyzed by Urban Crossroads Professional Transportation Engineering Firm, and that analysis is again attached to its number PC4. In order to manage the parking for the site, you know that in the zoning code, it talks about having to provide a parking management plan. How do you do that when there's no parking onsite? So it's rather simple, and that is a condition of approval that talks to the employees having to find alternative modes of transportation. It's an encouraging condition rather than a mandate, through an incentive program that the employer would offer to incentivize employees to take alternative modes, and that is condition of approval number nine, I believe, in the resolution. And lastly, the city traffic engineer did review, accept the methodology of that study, mainly noting that the Marine Avenue on-street parking is widely used, many residents frequent the commercial areas, visitors take alternative modes of transportation, there's a lot of bicycling and pedestrian activity in that area, it's highly traversed by many different modes of transit. I forgot to mention golf carts, important on the island. In terms of required findings, we looked to the sale and service of alcohol. You noticed that the police department did provide a memorandum that went through the crime statistics. This is a lower crime area, and there's no undue concentration due to that, and the police department does not object to the introduction of alcohol at this location. It is consistent with several general plan and local coastal program policies as identified in the resolution. It's compatible with the area, given its limited operational characteristics. Again, they have taken sound attenuation measures with the walls, the earlier closing hour, there's no live entertainment and no dancing. Again, the restaurant does face Marine Avenue, and it's really supposed to drive all activity towards Marine Avenue and away from the alley. Lastly, the building does comply with all development standards, and we've already talked about the off-street parking waiver. I would like to mention, too, that because this is a coastal development permit, we have to look to the Coastal Act in our Title 21 of the Municipal Code. The project does not impact access as identified in a local coastal program. You'll see the diagram to the left of that statement shows the blue area that is the identified access. This is removed by at least one property and does not impact that in any way, shape, or form, but it does provide a new visitor-serving commercial use that is refreshed for the Balboa Island Marine Avenue corridor. Further, it's not visible from any local coastal program viewpoints, and it really should serve to enhance the visual quality of Marine Avenue. Conditions of approval, I won't read through all these, but these are notable, and I want to highlight that all recommended conditions of approval from the police department were included in the resolution. Additionally, hours of operation are limited, and I always like to highlight number one and six, substantial conformance and changes to the project. Basically, what you'll see tonight is what you're going to get when it's implemented, if it is approved. So as far as recommendation, conduct a public hearing, find the project's from CEQA under Class 1 Existing Facilities, and adopt a resolution for approval. I do want to note that there was correspondence received, as you probably saw, some expressing concern with regard to how the alley area would be used. There's also concern with alcohol, which we've addressed, and parking, which we've addressed. These conditions were applied at the Royal Hen, which is a restaurant that was recently established through a minor use permit at the zoning administrator. So these are conditions that we've applied recently on another restaurant. The applicant is amenable to adding these conditions in response to the correspondence that's been received in order to help limit the activity at the rear of the restaurant and keep the compatibility with the residents behind. So again, these are conditions that if you choose to approve the item tonight, staff would recommend that you include these conditions as well. That concludes my presentation. Again, the applicant, Marin Howard von Blum, is here and would like to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. One moment, please.
Oh, sorry.
We'll get there. I'll bring it back, great presentation, by the way. I'll bring it back to the Commissioners and see if they have any questions of staff. All right, seeing none, ex parte communications, any ex parte communications?
None.
None.
I spoke with a representative of the applicant.
None for me.
Yeah, representative of the applicant and a few business owners on Marine.
Right, okay, now I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to make a comment or have a presentation?
Good evening, Chairman and Honorable Planning Commissioners. Thank you all for taking the time to review and consider the proposed project, Ark Restaurant on Balboa Island. This project has been many years in planning and creation, and I'm so excited to finally have this project presented to you this evening. As a current restaurant operator in Newport Beach and Costa Mesa, this restaurant is especially near and dear to my family. My husband was born and raised in Newport Beach, and I enjoyed summers on Balboa Island every year. The building itself is meant to be a cottage, an homage to the quaint front porches of Balboa Island and the nostalgic nature of the island itself. The restaurant will be outdoor seating with the cottage serving as the backdrop for diners. The petite cottage will not only house a store, or it will house only a two-story kitchen and restrooms. The building is approximately 1,200 square feet, so it's very, very petite, and it is one of the smallest buildings to be constructed on Marine Avenue. The building is set back from the street approximately 30 feet, and as Ben pointed out earlier, the deck is 13 feet from the sidewalk, so it really does offer that kind of beautiful setback and relief from that wall-to-wall Marine Avenue that's happening. A large garden patio will serve as the outdoor dining space, which is a first for Marine Avenue. And I just want to say how much I cherished my days and summers on Balboa Island as a kid. I remember walking around with all the neighbors sitting on their front porches, and it would just kind of create impromptu gatherings and wonderful memories of people saying hello, and the sense of the community that is so rich on the island is something we want to recreate for our diners. We hope to serve as Marine Avenue's front porch and bring the local community together through well-crafted food and an upscale atmosphere. Our hope is by reinvesting in our community through this very thoughtful project, it will spur in more residents, owners, and proprietors to reinvigorate their passion in the beautiful island. I'm available for any questions, thank you so much.
Thank you. In the, and there are conditions of approval associated with this project, are you in agreement with the conditions of approval?
I definitely am.
And the additional conditions that staff brought up?
Yes, we are.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I just have a question, more curious, out of curiosity than anything else, I'm wondering why everything here is exterior and there's no interior dining. I mean, most of the year, the weather's pretty great, but it does get a little chilly in the winter, so just curious about the logic for that design.
Absolutely, so we do have a restaurant that's in Cannery Village right now called Ark Butcher and Baker, and the patio is kind of the highlight of the restaurant. And we thought, you know, Balboa Island is an island, and this, the lot is actually very petite in general, so for us, we wanted to create a different style of atmosphere that wasn't offered, so something that was new and kind of reinvigorated the idea of the island, especially as kind of we've seen through COVID, people enjoy dining outside. And then the second-story deck is meant to offer a little bit of relief from weather and also kind of offer a shaded spot while still offering patio seating. So it does have a little bit of that kind of second story to overhang, but then it still does have that nice weather block from the walls on the side and then the deck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? I have a quick question. Condition number nine is about the parking, encouraging staff to park off-site.
Absolutely.
With an incentive program. So if I think about parking off-site, I think about the office building, which is basically private, and the retail center, which is private, and the yacht club, which is private. Can you, have you given any thought or maybe communicated? If you haven't, it's fine, but what kind of incentive program are you utilizing? Because I'd be, love just, for the record, love to hear.
Absolutely, oh no, it, okay, so I was up on my phone, but, so for us, we do have, at our other location, we have a lot of people that bike, we do have a lot of employees that live in Balboa Village, so they do plan on taking the ferry over and riding their bikes. And then we plan on giving employee, free employee meals for people who participate in off-site parking, monthly gift card giveaways, and then additional incentives as, like, as I said, gift cards, kind of, I'm so sorry, spacing on the other ones. And then a lot of people do carpool in general, and then people like to ride bikes, and then we do have a lot of people, we try to hire locally as much as possible as well, so hopefully we will get a lot of applicants who live on Balboa Island are able to walk to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We brought up the concept of the open air earlier, but I was just wondering, did you have any idea about if we gave the opportunity for you to have a retractable awning or something? Would that be of interest in any way?
I think most certainly, as you know, patrons always give their input, if things would dictate, a retractable awning is something that people would enjoy. I do know that it's not a permanent fixture in that way, so I don't think it necessarily has to be on the plan, but that's why we did want to create the deck, because that way we do have that natural barrier, and then there can be umbrellas and things like that to offer for guests that do like enjoy the sunshine.
So for staff, is that an issue in any way?
That would be in substantial conformance, as long as it doesn't become an all-permanent weather enclosure, all-weather enclosure, rather.
Sure. I think that's my comment.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, at this time, I, thank you.
Thank you so much.
At this time, I'll open it up to the audience for a public comment. Step on up to the mic, if you have any public comment, fill it, please tell us your name, and time limit's three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sue Ellen Waters, and I'm a resident of Balboa Island, part-time. We own a house on Aggett, and my husband's family has a house on the Grand Canal, right down from the restaurant. And I currently am across the street from 501 Park Avenue, and the outdoor dining is really awful, the noise, and they want to encourage people to walk by and greet their friends, and then you've got 10 people talking and the noise and the chatter, and then you have, you know, residents behind the alley, and who, how are you going to prevent people from not going down the alley, or people from smoking out in the alley? It just, the whole outdoor concept, to me, is not a good plan for peaceful residents. You know, the island used to be clothing stores, a few coffee shops, all indoor dining, but now you get this outdoor dining, and the noise is awful, and you have noise at 10 o'clock at night, and it's not like they leave at 10:00. They finish their meal, and then they visit, and then they leave, and restaurants don't kick them out, they let their customers, you know, rule, and, you know, the residents, we're all tight in there, and outdoor dining is not a good proposal for Balboa Island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Kramer. I actually came for the sushi, item number three, but I was watching the presentation, it was amazing. And I go to Balboa Island every Sunday with my family, a mass, and we walk over the bridge, there's public parking in the cosmetic care in that lot, you just pay for it. So I think I heard that it would just be a minor use permit without the parking issue, so I think the main issue for you is the parking, and, I mean, there's plenty of places to, I go to Balboa Island all the time, I don't live there, and walking across the bridge, walking through Marine Avenue is part of the charm, and I love the concept of outdoor dining. I've been to the other restaurant in Cannery Village, and it's amazing, and it's just beer and wine, so it never gets too rowdy. It's just, it's a great plan, and I support it, and thank you for people investing into Balboa Island and another great concept that's just part of the fabric of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Neuss, I live next door to the building at 222 Marine Avenue. One thing that's causing me a little bit of heartburn is that with all the parking waivers, is that they're taking out three parking places that are on the site. We're losing three parking places. Making a point. You know, we're a very residential alley, and most of the people live there on Grand Canal, they're all residential all the way down. One of my questions, too, is what, what kind of a firewall, or they're talking about building some kind of a concrete wall between the buildings or on the property line? Can anybody explain that to me? No?
Please go ahead with your comments.
Pardon me?
Please move forward with your comments, sir.
Yeah.
I can bring it back later and address those questions.
Okay. There's no loading zone, I mean, there's no loading area, that's another problem. We've got, an average restaurant on Balboa Island has about 30 deliveries a week, and so we're going to be blocked in our alley by, they're going to, what they're going to do is they're going to park right in the alley and unload there. No loading zone, and they're not going to be talking about the firewall, or? Not going to answer my question, or?
Sir, I can bring it back later, but not at this time, sir.
Okay, all right. And then if we're going to have a, they're talking about a two-inch, being two inches from, let's say, our building, how do we keep that from being, you know, a leaf trap? I'm assuming they have to put some kind of a cap on it to keep it from leaves getting inside there, causing a bug problem? One of my issues. And the concrete wall, that's the other thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, ooh, what's this loud? Sorry. I own Wilma's Patio, and my family's had a restaurant on Balboa Island for 40 years now, and we've had two different locations, so I'm very well-versed in a lot of the items that I'm seeing, and I'm not opposed necessarily to bringing in more restaurants and things like that, it's the parking for me that's a real problem. What I wish I would see from the city and from the Planning Commission in that is to give some relief of parking situations, because you're bringing in a business that has a lot more people that need to park, that work there, a lot more people will come there, and that's fine, but you're doing this backwards. We're not creating a parking situation to increase all the restaurants. Since my parents bought our property and our restaurant, there's been several more eating areas that have come up, Picante Martins, which is now gone, but it's being remodeled. There's Crocker's, it never was a restaurant before, and now we're There's Crocker's, it never was a restaurant before, and now we're adding more, but we're not adding more parking, and we're not adding the ability to move people around. We had tried to come up with a way to have, excuse me, electric cars, or like, you know, like six-seater kind of golf carts like they had around, you know, Frank, that was around Fashion Island to move people around, to move them from the ferry, to bring people down to Marine, to take them across the bridge over to the pavilion's parking lot and up to Fashion Island and back. And we still don't have that in place. If we had something in place that could help move around all the people that are going to come, we're just going to cause problems. So I think we need to do two sides to this, if you're going to keep allowing more restaurants. We need more ability for people to get there and to park, because if you don't, you're just going to have to, we're all going to lose business. Because when another restaurant comes, I'm going to lose four or five families or people that are going to go to that restaurant, which is, you know, fine. But I can't even recoup that, because there's nowhere to park. And I've been parking down there for 40 years. It's hard, especially on 4th of July weekend, the boat parade, Memorial Weekend, Labor Day, different events. So I wish that was more focused on as well. If we're going to make these changes and we're going to do rooftop decks and stuff, because I'll be happy to add a rooftop deck, that'd be awesome. But we're doing it backwards. Can we do something about the parking? That's my biggest problem. And like John said, I have a lot of delivery trucks, and it's not, luckily, I'm right near the alley, and we have that big wide area on Park Avenue between myself and the Village Inn. And the big trucks park in between the two lanes. There's nothing on their end of the island. So what, are they going to have truck, you know, taking the foot trucks all the way down to their place to deliver, because there's no place? So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Scott LaSoy. I live on Pearl Avenue on Balboa Island. I also own a commercial building on Marine Avenue at 217 Marine, almost across the street from the subject property. And first, I want to thank the applicant, the developer, for making such a large investment on Balboa Island. I can appreciate the efforts that go into the process. I reviewed the plans, I reviewed the staff report, and I want to lend my support for this new development. We have learned from the COVID pandemic that people have embraced outdoor dining, and that has been a very positive experience on Balboa Island. This new development provides a great deal of space along Marine Avenue, open space, that is, and I can appreciate how the design of the building accounts for the residential homes that are behind. I wish there was a little bit more roof coverage on it, because this property is on the south side of Marine Avenue, and it's known as the, excuse me, the sunny side of Marine Avenue. So it will take a lot of afternoon sun, and it will be more exposed to the weather elements. And that's something for the restaurant operator to figure out how to address, but it would have been nice to see a little bit more shade coverage, because I think they're going to be dealing with heaters and the need for umbrellas and/or awning or something of that sort. But nonetheless, I know that the outdoor dining will be a huge hit, as it has been for the last couple of years. I want to state that I fully support and embrace Arc Balboa Island. I look forward to witnessing its success. I would like to make one comment about something that was said earlier, about the 501 Park Avenue Restaurant. They do have outdoor dining there, but they are directly across the street and adjacent to residential. This situation's different on this subject's property. They are facing Marine Avenue, and Marine Avenue is commercial up and down the street. And the patrons that will be at this restaurant will be in a commercial environment. And 501 Park, there is a significant difference, because it is an intersection where residential's on all of the three, three sides of the intersection. So there is a fundamental difference. I can appreciate the fact that if this wasn't directly across the street and had residential all around it, what impact that might have. But there are some fundamental differences in the locations of the property. Again, thank you for my opportunity to talk with you this evening, and I lend my support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Rainey. I, I'm the owner of 223 Grand Canal, it's right behind. And also, my neighbors at 225 and 227 have some of the similar concerns. Really, many of my points have already been made, but I think that there are some things that you really need to be aware of. First of all, access in the alley is a problem. And what Sheri put forth, what John put forth, this, this is a real problem for all of us. And the fact that we have deliveries for some of the restaurants who park in the middle of Balboa Avenue means we can't get into our houses. It's also a problem with access for emergency vehicles. So the parking and the traffic problem is a significant issue here that needs to be addressed. I also have concerns about the noise. I found it a little interesting to see the chart on page 35, talking about decibel levels in residential areas, 100 feet, within 100 feet. Well, my bedroom is about 20 feet from where the upper deck will be. And I go to bed early occasionally, I get up very early to work, to take care of phone calls on the East Coast, and to do a lot of business. And to not be able to get a good night's sleep is a real problem. So I'm concerned about the upper deck and the noise. I'm concerned also about the parking traffic issues, and it's, previous speakers have addressed that. I honestly don't see where gift cards and incentives are really going to solve the problem. With all respect to one of the previous speakers, you can't always find a parking place on Balboa Island, and that's not just in August and July, 4th of July weekend. I often have to move my car, I only have a single pad behind my house, which was built in 1934. Thank God you've allowed me to keep, keep the totally non-compliant house, but that's my parking. If I have a serviceman coming over, I often have to park six blocks away so they can use the pad. I have a friend who's an amputee, when she comes to visit, I park several blocks away. So parking is an issue for all of us, and it must be addressed, and this is not a low-impact series. The noise, the parking, the setbacks, the issues of the firewall, the safety, the issues of transport up and down the canal. This is a residential neighborhood for just about everybody, except those who have a Marine Avenue address. And that is quite unlike the Cannery Village situation, which is lovely, but it's not, it's not the same. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Larry Tucker. I've owned a house on the Grand Canal on Little Balboa Island for a little over 10 years. I lived on Balboa Island from 1976 to 1978, and then Little Balboa Island from 2014 to 2017. I spent 11 years on the planning commission, so this is kind of deja vu all over again for me. But the issues that people are raising are issues that always come up when you have residential adjacent to commercial. People buy residential adjacent to commercial are taking this consequence. I mean, that's just the way it is, and it's never going to change in the city, and that's no reason to tell somebody they can't use their property in a fashion that otherwise meets all of the requirements. As far as parking on, you know, the Marine, I mean, hardly any of the restaurants have parking spaces, and if that freezes the, the possibilities of using your property for a higher and better use, and, you know, I, I don't think that's a great idea. So I fully support this project. I think it, it, it's the type of project that hopefully will inspire others, as the applicant indicated, to, to follow suit. And that redounds to the property values of, of just about everybody, and the people that live right next door may have some impacts, but I tend to doubt it. I think that, you know, it's not going to be perfect for them, there's going to be more activity there, there'd have to be just about more activity with any use than the activity that that little dress shop has. So I'm a supporter of, of the project, and I actually think I would go the opposite direction, which is, I think, when you, when your item on the agenda comes up for something to put on a future agenda, I really think the necessity for going through a traffic study, when the, when there's a foregone conclusion before the study ever starts, is something that you shouldn't have to do, an applicant shouldn't have to do. I mean, you're going to have the findings of every traffic study on Balboa Island that you had in this particular traffic study, so what's the point? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, to the applicant, you have the opportunity, if you'd like, to come back up and respond to any of the comments, it's an option. Nope? Okay. Staff, any comments for the record?
Just related to the wall, I don't have the particulars, I'm in the planning division, so I'm not a building engineer by any way, shape, or form, but I would say that it is a concrete block wall that will comply with all current building code standards. There are no openings, so it'll be compliant with fire separation standards, being that it is on the zero lot line. And it'll be capped at the top to prevent leaves and things from falling in, as was said earlier.
Okay, thank you. All right, and this time, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comment. And our motion.
I have a quick, a question for Ben. I should remember this, I lived two blocks from the site for a few, for a few years. The former Starbucks there, the, the building that's on the corner there, is that a loading zone over there? I know, I think it's green, but is it loading as well, in that kind of, it's not an alley, but that, that turn?
It's a good question, I might ask our new city traffic engineer, Brad Summers.
I should remember that, but I, I just, I can't off the top of my head.
Yeah, good evening, as Ben said, I'm Brad Summers, your new city traffic engineer upon Tony Bryant's retirement. I believe it's actually a handicap spot now that's immediately adjacent to the Starbucks.
And then on the other side, next to the Chinese restaurant, I just, I just remember see, I just used to remember seeing trucks there a lot, that's the reason I was asking. I thought maybe that was specifically a, a loading zone, or at least, maybe it was just convenient at the time, and they were just tended to always park there, so that might, I thought maybe that might alleviate some of the concern, concerns with the loading area, but?
Yeah, Simone just showed me, I was looking on my phone, a little grainy, but Simone with his computer, it does appear to be a, a green zone, so limited parking loading zone.
Okay, so it's limited, okay, thanks.
Ben, I don't know if you can answer, but the other restaurants now for deliveries and whatnot, alley, quick, say, similar conditions?
Yeah, they're all very much subject to the similar condition. Not all of them are near an intersection as this one is, but they all have that same interface where they have the small alley access and the larger Marine Avenue front.
Yeah, I lived on the island growing up, on 300 Block of Onyx, which is actually one block in, if anyone knows when you're coming in, and, you know, parking was a problem then. I don't know if it's going to solve it with, you know, not approving this item. I think this is a beautiful restaurant, a beautiful concept, I think it energizes that area, and I'm supportive.
Any other comments or a motion?
Like Justin, like I said a moment ago, yeah, I used to live there, and then that Starbucks was there, I mean, there was so much activity and so much life on that corner, and, and since it's gone, it's really been just dead over there. And I think a restaurant with this concept would, would definitely bring some life over there and, and other opportunities. Kind of some of the concerns that like Sheri and John brought up with parking, I mean, I know it's under our purview, but if there's ever a ad hoc committee that wanted to look at, with, with the city for, for alternatives for Balboa Island parking, I would definitely volunteer myself, just living there and, and just, that is such a jewel of our city and one of the higher tourist destinations, and everybody wants to go there, and, and to be able to one day alleviate that somehow with some, some creative thinking would be something that would benefit this, this city by far. So I would definitely volunteer for something that to, to help out, or at least attempt to help out the, the traffic problems there. But in light of where we're at currently today, I think this is going to be a beautiful restaurant. The, the concept is, 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 I, I think will do very well for Balboa Island and, and just kind of bring over that kind of quality that, that, the current restaurant that they have at, on the other side there at Newport, I think it'll be a great addition. So I will make the motion to approve the, approve item agenda number three, to find the project exempt from SEQA into adopt resolution PC 2, 2023-001.
And you want to include the?
Oh, yeah, and, and also with the additional conditions that were mentioned.
I'll make a second.
Okay, let's go ahead and call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations. Moving on to the next item. Sugar Fish Restaurant, site location, 2600 East Coast Highway. I believe, staff, you have a presentation, so if you want to proceed.
Yes, so thank you Chair Elmore, and good evening to the planning commission. My name is David Lee with the planning division, and this is the Sugar Fish Restaurant Conditional Use Permit at 2600 East Coast Highway. So this is the project site, it's a multi-tenant commercial building located in Coronel Del Mar on East Coast Highway, and the restaurant fronts Dahlia Avenue. The restaurant, or the building includes eight surface parking spaces, as well as a 76-space underground parking garage, which is tucked in the back, for a total of 84 parking spaces on site. The restaurant is located to, in that blue box area, I just wanted to bring this slide up to highlight that the restaurant is in immediate proximity to residential properties. There is a block of R2 residences on Fernleaf Avenue, as well as residences across Fifth Avenue on Point Del Mar Avenue. Just want to give a picture of the project location as it exists now, this is, Sugar Fish is the tenant space on the right, that's the proposed space facing Dahlia Avenue. There's another restaurant in this building on the left side, Bamboo Bistro, and there are other tenants, including retail and office suites in the building as well. Here's a quick floor plan, there's a small entry area, a modest customer dining area, as well as a kitchen and walk-in fridge in the back. Here's the operational characters, characteristics for the restaurant, interior net public area of 729 square feet, there's no outdoor dining proposed. Interior, there's 43 seats approximately. Here are the listed hours of operation. The applicant has since requested to modify the hours to 11:00 PM closing time, in correspondence yesterday to staff and to the planning commission. There's also no live entertainment or dancing requested, and the applicant is requesting a Type 41 ABC license. Just wanted to highlight the tenant spaces with Sugar Fish in Suite 100. And the main thing I wanted to highlight here is that with Sugar Fish, if it's approved, there still will be four vacant suites in the building moving forward. So I just wanted to put that in your mind before we move on to the parking. With this request, the applicant is requesting to waive 19 standard parking spaces that are required by code. As I mentioned earlier, there are vacant spaces, and the code analyzes those with standard or retail and office parking rates. So with that in mind, it's 103 required parking spaces. There are 84 spaces on site, and so there's a code deficit of 19 parking spaces. The applicant has provided a parking study, which provided counts taken on a weekend with typical weather. With that study, the observed demand was 91 spaces during peak times. That comes out to be observed parking deficit of seven spaces. In order to offset that, the applicant has provided a parking management plan, which is provided in the staff report. The parking management plan proposed- is provided in the staff report. The parking management plan proposes to have a heavy valet service during majority of the operational times, and this is gonna be effective once vacant suites are occupied. It's 11:30 to 8:00 p.m. on the weekdays, and I believe there's some weekend hours as well included in the resolution. But with this valet plan, it's 108 vehicles that are able to be parked in the underground garage, and with that, there's a 17-space surplus based on the observed demand per the parking study. Staff is in support of the project and has made findings in the attached resolution. The restaurant is in appropriate land use for the commercial corridor zoning, as it's kind of in the entryway to Coronel Del Mar. There are no late hours, live entertainment or dancing proposed with the restaurant. There is a large underground parking garage that is suitable for valet, and also large supply of street parking on Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street, Dahlia Avenue, and East Coast Highway. The Police Department has reviewed and provided conditions of approval, which have been incorporated into the resolution. With that, Staff is recommending the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and approve the Sugar Fish Restaurant CUP. The applicant is here as well from Sugar Fish, and they have a presentation when you're ready for them.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
If I may, just made one point of clarification. You heard that the applicant has requested extended hours to 11 o'clock, seven days a week. I want to let you know that Staff's reviewed that. We're okay with those hours of operation. The Police Department is also aware of that request, and they also would support that change if that is something that you would like to do.
Got it, thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commissioners for questions of Staff.
Yeah, a question about the parking management plan. Did you say that the valet service that they're contemplating using out here would not go into effect until the other vacant suites have all been occupied?
Yes, Chair Claus, I mean Commissioner Claus, that's correct, because right now there's vacancies, so there's really not parking impact at the time and when the restaurant comes in. However, the parking study shows that there would be an impact if they were all filled, accounting for those vacant suites.
And would the hours of valet be the entirety of the duration of when the restaurant is open?
So the conditioned hours of valet are from 11:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday, and from noon to 2:00 p.m., and from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. And I believe these coincide with the projected peak hours that were presented in the parking study. Since, you know, since the multi-tenant building and some office suites, they may not be in use at evenings and weekends, so I think that's why those hours were suggested and reviewed.
Okay, so then this is at the expense of Sugar Fish, but could be used for the benefit of Bamboo Bistro?
I believe it'd be...
And the other office spaces that are there?
Yeah, the services would be for the, you know, the entire building.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Similar clarification. It seemed to conflict a little bit in the report and the condition on that. So is, the valet's not required right now because of the vacancy, is it only required if it's fully leased up, or is it at development discretion, if there's problems?
It is required once the vacancies are leased up. So it's, once the vacancy is leased up, they're required to provide the valet parking.
But what if they lease up to 85%? We've, you know, have complaints. Can Staff then, you know, impose, or do you have discretion to do that at that time?
You have, I'll take a crack at that one here. We do have condition number 11 and 12 that actually provides some flexibility as we go forward. The purpose of that is really is if parking demand exceeds what we anticipate, you know, we can require that to be in place. If the parking demand actually doesn't materialize the way it's predicted, whether it's vacant or not, we feel we can then still implement the valet services through these conditions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Okay, any ex parte communications? Start with Commissioner Rosin. None?
None.
None.
None for me?
None.
Okay. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing to see the applicant have a presentation.
Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. Just want to say it's been a long time. We've been trying to come into this market for, I don't know, eight years. So it's really a pleasure to be able to come into the market and serve our food to the people. This is something we've always wanted to do, so...
Do you mind real quick stating your name?
Cameron Brumand.
Great, thank you.
Great. So there's a, there's a presentation. Sugar Fish started sushi, Nazawa started in 1983. Nazawa's kind of one of these sushi masters, has been doing it for his entire career. He's a man who's dedicated his craft, and he always wanted to bring traditional sushi to the American masses. So this is always sort of his dream, and sort of Sugar Fish was the incarnation of his, the years of work. So there's four of us that started it back in 2008, opened Marina Del Rey. We've expanded in Los Angeles and in New York. It's a very traditional style of sushi, which is called omakase. I'm sure, hopefully, people have heard of it before, but yeah, we've had a, people love the food, and we've had amazing, you know, patronage and people, you know, loving our food for years, and it's always a pleasure for us to serve customers and, you know, make everybody happy with our food. So, go on, it's a very simple menu. It's a trust me structure. It's, there's, it's basically like small, medium, large. You come in, you order, and it's very kind of a simple, straightforward concept. And, you know, we've, again, we've had a lot of, a lot of fans, a lot of followers, a lot of people in our restaurants, a lot of, you know, a lot of print media over the years, so it's something we've enjoyed doing. There's our locations we've had, pretty much all over Los Angeles, and you can see some of the designs of the restaurants, I think, in the next slides. This is the, obviously, the layout, and then I think the next slide shows the, some of the designs. So it's very upscale, modern design. You know, we really want to bring a nice, clean look, warm, inviting. You know, we really pride ourselves in making the space look, you know, clean, modern, inviting. People want to sit there and enjoy the food, and it's kind of what it is. There's a few more, our downtown location, Hollywood, Manhattan Beach. That's the closest we've gotten to Orange County is Manhattan Beach. Passing you, so. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay, no questions, nor, and as it sits right now, there are, there are conditions of approval. Are you in agreement with them as they, as they are, as they sit right now?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Great. I'll go ahead and open the public comment up to anybody in the audience that has a public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Commissioners, let me see here. Any questions for Staff?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Harris's question, which is a good question about, about the parking. I've got a Bamboo Bistro quite a bit, and, I mean, I never park. When I go in the parking structure, I rarely ever even make the turn, so there's hardly anyone there. So I'm just thinking, yeah, is it more discretionary? And it's what it seems like, just because, you know, it seemed like it might overburden, you know, the property owner a little bit if you make them get a valet service right now when there's two floors of parking there. And I think they just redid the, redid the parking structure down below. So I think for now, there's, it seems like there's adequate parking and it shouldn't be an issue. It just, you know, when, you know, hopefully that triggers when that is needed, not at this time, because I can't imagine it being needed today.
By the way, I'll close the public hearing as well. Yep, sorry. Commissioners, any other questions of Staff? I have a comment that I wanted to make. So the waiver that you're requesting is for 19 parking stalls, which is a lot for this, for this little building. What my concern, or I guess my thought on this is, we want to be open 11 to 11, but the valet, you want to stop especially on Fridays and Saturdays at 5:00 p.m. while still open till 11:00 p.m. And if Sugar Fish is gonna be as successful as it has been in some of our locations, that my opinion, the peak demand's gonna be at 6, 7, 8, 9 o'clock. I get it, other tenants won't be there, but we're asking for a waiver of 19 parking stalls. So I feel like we're, at any way you look at it, there's gonna be an impact. The parking's gonna be incredibly impacted. That's my thought on this. So, and my recommendation and my thought for everybody up here is maybe to beef up the conditions of approval. My, I'd like to see the valet effective immediately, in my opinion, and then my thought would be that we do not extend the hours till 11:00 o'clock on Sunday through Thursday. We keep them as they are stated in our, in our package. And then the valet, noon to 2:00 during, let's see, 11:30 to 8:00 on the, on the weeknights, I think I'm fine with, but the valet, I think we should have regardless, not contingent upon the lease up. They're not pulling CUPs. We may never know if they ever get leased up, because if they're not pulling a permit, how are we ever gonna know? So in my opinion, I think we should have the valet effective immediately, and then the valet should be there on Saturdays and Sundays, should be there till, till 8:00 p.m. I'm not as concerned than noon to 2:00. I don't see a concern with that, but valets on Saturdays and Sundays from 3:00 till 8:00, to minimize, you know, the parking ramifications.
I think the applicant might have a question. If you'd like to reopen it?
Yeah, okay, I'll go ahead and reopen the public comment.
Good evening, Plan Commissions, Chris Burt of Cox Castle and Nicholson, ladies counsel for the project owner. With respect to the, the hours of the valet operation, so it is to your inclination that you have these kind of offset uses, where demand is actually highest during the day, or projected to be highest during the day, right? Under existing conditions, four of the spaces are actually vacant, so demand is very minimal right now. But assuming they were all occupied, if those are occupied with kind of day uses, office spaces and things like that, the demand drops dramatically after 5:00, which is the, why you have demand reduced during those hours, which the parking study showed you wouldn't need valet to accommodate for an overflow of parking.
I appreciate that, but the waiver, as I see it, and I'll just stop right there, is for 19 stalls. So again, my opinion, if this is gonna be successful as it is in its other locations, which we all, we all hope it is, we're gonna be incredibly hamstrung from a parking perspective. And I don't think, it's not unforeseeable that you come back in a year and say, hey, look, we've overserviced. We can come back and try to modify the condition of approval at a later point, but that's, that's how I see it.
Okay, and then on the hours of operation till 11:00 p.m., I know that the project, Sugar Fish itself would prefer that, would ask that the hours at least be extended till 11:00 p.m. on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The original request was to extend it to every day till 11:00 p.m., but it is really integral to their service on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And it's not to extend service so that you would be getting new meals at, let's say, 10:15 or something. It's to allow people that, you know, come in at 9:30 to have time to finish their meals before they're, you know, actually, the restaurant is forced to close.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Kramer, I see that the public comment or public hearing was reopened, so I decided to come up here. I'm literally one of those people. I live in CDM. I live very close to the project. And mid-December, I was walking by the building. They had done a really nice job refacing it, and I saw the sign, Sugar Fish. I saw the note for public hearing. I got very excited. I plan to walk there all the time. I personally don't think it's even fair to require any valet parking. I mean, in CDM, we have very little valet parking, and there are parking options everywhere. There's public lots, there are streets. I mean, and a lot of people walk. That's why they love to live in CDM. They, they love to walk, right? I think it's a smart business decision if they want to offer valet parking, because they'll get more people from outside of CDM coming. But I personally don't think it should be required at all. And I think that, I agree with Staff that 11:00 is a reasonable closing hour, and so I would support the project. I've been watching Planning Commission and council meetings for maybe 10 years. I've never commented, and I think it just takes two really good restaurants to come out here. There's nothing really better in life than a nice meal shared with friends, and this would just be a fantastic addition to Coronel Del Mar. And no valet, that's, I mean, they accept valet, and 11:00 closing. That's what I recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back again. Commissioner Rosin?
Regarding parking, 19 stalls is a lot. I'll give you that. And, but historically, it seems like there's availability in the area. So I'm wondering, is there a way to have a, what would be the enforcement? If we gave the applicant the option of when to implement the parking on a needs basis? I realize that's pretty open-ended, so I'm trying to figure out how the applicant, how we could give the applicant some flexibility.
Right. I think we have provided a fair amount of flexibility in this approval. The information we have right now suggests that there is a future need, and hence that's why the conditions are written the way they are. But you also see a condition in there that's such that if it actually comes out differently, they don't need it, the Community Development Director then could administratively eliminate that requirement, or theoretically expand it if it's going the other direction. And so, you know, I think at this point, I mean, it's a pretty good compromise to go ahead and, based on the data that we have now, go ahead and require it based on the hours that are there, although there may be some differences as to what those hours should be. I understand Mr. Elmore's comments. But there is that flexibility. So I think it kind of gives them, you know, the communities some protection and some flexibility for the applicant.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. So I did have one more question for Staff, and it relates to the traffic, the parking management plan, and it's the pickup location and how that would work based on the orientation of the building and the front door. I don't really see how that works in the diagram. It's on handwritten page 75. It almost becomes like a traffic issue. If it's really the front doors right there, you're making it right off of Coast Highway, and you're right there. Is that how it's meant to work, or will you be able to drive straight to the parking structure if you needed to, and then meet your valet there? I guess it's kind of operational, frankly, but the thought.
I'm looking at the plan. I believe the actual drop-off is in the alley in their private property where they have the surface spots will become a valet drop-off, and the pickup will be adjacent to the entry to the parking structure, which again is in the alley. But it wouldn't be at the front door at the corner of the intersection.
Any other questions? Commissioner Harris?
Just my, my thoughts on, valet seems pretty onerous to, to require upfront. To me, I don't know, you know, if they're kicking off. I know it could be expensive, but I'm not against it necessarily. But I do think this will self-regulate. I don't think Bamboo Bistro is gonna be excited if all their parking's taken. I don't think the other office users are gonna be thrilled if they can't get to work or leave. And as long as I feel, as long as Staff has the flexibility to implement if they need it, I think I'm more comfortable with that. Second, kind of off-topic was, or similar, but a few, I don't know if it was our last meeting, it's been so long, or the meeting before, we were working on the parking study for the whole city, and that area is likely gonna expand or become, you know, a little more open with ratios? Is that true, and how far away would we be with that potentially, if you know, offhand?
Certainly. We are studying parking rates, not all the rates in the community. Restaurants are one of the focus points. We're also looking with consultants as to, you know, district parking management. And so we'll be bringing forward in the next couple of months some additional reforms.
From what I remember, that it seemed like we were likely gonna be more flexible in those impacted areas around PCH, the Peninsula, the beach zones. Is that correct?
I, I think you could characterize it that way, yes. To encourage alternative forms of transportation, use of ride share and other mobility, then now you could reduce parking as a result. And when you don't have parking, clearly then you've got to look for other ways to get there, or, you know, as you said, it will self-regulate. And in reality, we'll be encouraging different modes of transportation by doing the parking waivers. In this particular location, you know, it's a pretty big parking In this particular location, you know, it's a pretty big parking pool, there are some street parking spaces in the area that really don't affect residences that much, and so, you know, with the conditions in the valet operations, we feel this should function quite adequately, and the flexibility in the valet operations, once we see how it's operating, when the building is full and the restaurant is operating, then we can actually step back and remove the valet if it's really not needed.
Any other questions of staff?
I'll just make some general comments. I feel comfortable with the way that Condition 11 is drafted, that staff has discretion to address the parking needs out here, so I don't think that we need to straightaway require valet parking out here. I'm also supportive of the restaurants staying open seven days a week until eleven. Those are my general thoughts, supportive of this as it's drafted.
Great. Any other comments? No? Question for you, staff, how many other, do we know, and you may not know the answer to this, from a CUP perspective, how many, are any of the other sushi restaurants or restaurants, sushi restaurants specifically, open till eleven? Do they have the ability to be open till eleven in Corona Del Mar?
I'm not familiar with the sushi restaurants in Corona Del Mar, I didn't know Bo was open till much later than this, but beyond that, I don't have that answer for you specifically.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I kind of see everyone's kind of leading here, in my opinion, I'm not as, again, I'm not as held up on the hours of operation. I guess, staff, how, if no one needs other tenants in the building, if they don't require a certificate of occupancy, how will, how will the city of Newport Beach know if the building is, is leased up?
We won't necessarily know unless there's a building permit and a certificate of occupancy, but if they just need to paint it, put some carpet up, you know, then an office tenant moves in, we're not going to know that. You know, we don't get a report of new business licenses, we'll, we'll be relying upon the applicant to provide that information. You know, the applicant fully believes that the parking demand is going to be less than what was predicted by the parking study, it was a fairly conservative study, and so I think they're going to want to be reevaluating this to eliminate the valet condition, although they may want to keep it for convenience to the customers. You know, I think the conditions allow us to, the flexibility to let that all play out.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve as-is with the applicant's request to stay open till eleven on Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Wait a second.
I mean, I'll, I'll say, but can I make an, what is an alternate motion? Alternate motion, just for seven days a week, I don't, I don't see a problem unless there's something to discuss, or, I mean, El Ranchito's right there, I mean, I don't know, I think of that area, and I just don't see it being an issue past eleven, but I'm willing to hear other people's thoughts on it.
Sorry, the public hearing is closed, sir.
It looks like we have a motion and then a friendly amendment, so if Mr. Rosin is a member.
I can support the alternate motion.
Call for a vote?
The motion carries four-one with Chair Elmore voting no.
All right, congratulations, on to our next item. The item number five, Hannah Residences, site location thirty-four fourteen Balboa Boulevard. Staff, are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Elmore. This is the Hannah Residences, three zero one four Balboa Boulevard. My name is David Lee from the Planning Division, again. This, the subject property is a commercial lot located in the Balboa Peninsula. It's adjacent to the Landing Shopping Center. The lot is approximately three thousand five hundred square feet, and the land use is commercial neighborhood, same with the zoning and the coastal zoning. Just wanted to give a little background on the, the property. It was constructed in nineteen oh-two as a seven hundred fifty square foot, single-family residence. It was previously zoned as residential. However, in nineteen eighty-six, there was a general plan amendment and a local coastal program amendment to change the property to commercial. Since then, there's been food use authorized nineteen ninety-six, and as well as Sancho's Tacos, which is the restaurant today, operating since two thousand thirteen. The applicant is requesting to demolish the existing restaurant and construct a two-unit condominium residential project, and these are the entitlements required for that to happen. First is a general plan amendment to change the land use from residential, from commercial to residential. Second is a local coastal program amendment to change the coastal land use from commercial to residential, and also to amend a setback map, which I'll touch on later. I want to highlight that since it's an LCP amendment, it does require Coastal Commission approval if the project is approved by the Planning Commission and the City Council. It will need to go to the Coastal Commission for their review for this project to be effective. It also requires a zoning code amendment to change the zone from commercial to residential and amend the setback map. A coastal development permit is required for the project, and a tentative parcel map for the condominium purposes is for the separate sale of each unit. I want to touch on the land use compatibility, that's the, the restaurant now in yellow. Staff does believe that the property is compatible with the surrounding land use. As you can see, all of these properties here in the green are zoned R2, and so really, this is within the mix of R2, it's this one lot on the edge there, and it used to be residential as well, so staff does believe that it is compatible as a land use to be residential. It's also similar in size and orientation as the lots next to it that are residential. The project request is for a new two-unit condo. As you can see, it's a three-story design with a two-car garage and two-car carport. This is a side profile of the project elevation. In terms of development standards, it does comply with the proposed R2 zone standards. It includes setbacks, floor area, the open space, parking, and the height, so there's no deviations from the proposed R2 standards. It's a standard, a two-unit condo residence. So staff did receive correspondence from Coastal Commission staff, a letter which highlighted their concerns. One concern they had was that there is a low amount of lots that are zoned commercial neighborhood on the Balboa Peninsula. Second is that the approval of the project would result in the elimination of affordable visitor-serving use, which is Sancho's Tacos restaurant. And finally, they've looked at the cumulative loss of commercial uses when reviewing previous local coastal program amendments, and the letter concluded with the Coastal Commission staff suggesting the denial of the project. This letter was included in the staff report, and staff has also addressed these comments in the staff report, but I'll also address them here in the presentation quickly. First one is that although it is one out of five commercial neighborhood lots in the area, as you can see, it's a very small parcel in comparison to the large CN zones, zone lots, it actually amounts to one point eight percent of the square footage of the CN, so it's, in terms of size, it's rather insignificant for the parcel. Second slide, you can see that although you would eliminate this, this CN property and turn it into R2, you can see the pink, the red, the salmon color, those are all surrounding commercial uses that are nearby, so there's ample amounts of commercial lots in the Peninsula The elimination of low-cost visitor-serving restaurant, Sancho's Tacos, staff doesn't believe that it changes the characteristic of Balboa Peninsula, as you can see, all of the highlighted letters and the map legend on the right, those are all the, you know, a survey of the remaining low-cost visitor-serving restaurants, which are in the immediate area, so staff doesn't believe that it makes any impact to the character of the community. And third, the concern about the cumulative effects of past LCP amendments, and this is the concern that this project in, with, in combination of previous projects are, are eliminating commercial properties from the coastal zone, and so staff has reviewed this concern, and the subject property is highlighted there, and these are the addresses that are provided by the Coastal Commission staff. Two oh-five Orange Street on the left, and then one twenty-nine Aggett Avenue on Balboa Island are two properties that were converted from commercial to residential. Eighteen hundred Balboa Boulevard was mentioned, but however, it, when staff did the research, it's actually a conversion from residential into visitor-serving commercial, which is hotel, so that actually is providing more commercial area in the coastal zone. Staff wanted to be thorough and include two more, which are nearby, two more examples. Thirty-three oh-three Via Lido is the Lido Villas, and that is the, that was a conversion of commercial and private institution into residential zone, which is the Lido Villas today. And finally, an example of the Old City Hall, which is now the Lido House Hotel. It's a large lot, around four acres, that was amended to be from a, a public facility into a visitor-serving use. And so with all that being said, kind of totaling these up, really, the conversion to residential has been, you know, a total of one acre, where the conversion, conversion of commercial uses in the coastal zone with these examples is over four acres, so staff doesn't have this concern that there's a cumulative effect of losing commercial properties. Changing gears really quick, there is a setback map amendment for the zoning code and for the LCP, and that's simply for this clouded three on the left map, which is the existing map, and this is a front setback on this, along the side property line, and simply the amendment is just to remove that, that three, three-foot front setback there. That would allow the property owner to construct a six-foot fence without a height limit of three and a half feet on the side property line. So staff has provided a resolution with findings. Staff sees that the lot was originally developed as residential, and the proposed change is consistent with the surrounding R2 zone that I've shown previously. Second, the proposed condominium does comply with the proposed R2 standards. It has, it provides the required parking where the existing restaurant has non-conforming parking, so it may actually open up street parking for visitors to the beach now that there's not overflow coming onto the streets. The project does not change the character of the Peninsula as there's numerous lower-priced restaurants nearby. And finally, as I've shown you in the map previously, there's significant amount of commercial that remains in the, in the nearby area on the Peninsula. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and recommend approval of the Hannah Residences project to the City Council, which is tentatively scheduled for February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, Marcelo Liché, is here, he can answer any questions if you have for him as well.
Thank you, David, great presentation. Commissioners, any questions of staff? No? Okay, ex parte communications? None?
None.
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 All right, I've seen none, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to say any words or have a presentation?
My name is Marcelo Liché, I'm the architect for the project. The owner couldn't be here tonight, so I'm representing him. I just wanted to say thank you for all the effort that David Lee and the staff put into studying this proposal, and I just want to say that it makes sense to, you know, go back to the residential, given that in Balboa Boulevard, there's basically no commercial except for the Landing and the Chase Bank in the corner. And we believe it will be a good improvement to the city, will also help to reduce the deficit of residential that the city has, and to me, it makes sense to do this conversion from commercial to residential. That's it.
Thank you. Does the, is your client, the applicant, approve the conditions, are they in agreement with the conditions of approval?
Yes.
As you've stated? Great. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you. Public hearing, anybody else in the audience want to comment on this item? No? Okay. I've seen none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to this body for any discussion or motion.
I just have a quick question, staff, actually. I noticed that there were, because there's an increased density, you have additional park fees in here. Are there any other development impact fees that should be allocated to this?
There, there could be a fair share fee here, but there would be, there would be a credit for the commercial, so I don't believe there actually would be a fee for that, that may be a very small fee if there is one. There will be school fees, of course, but, but none, no other city fees, I mean, aside from plan checking fees, but.
And then, shifting gears, I was, I saw the one document that showed the new alignment of the crosswalk, which is pretty significant in terms of improvements for something like that. Is the applicant going to do those improvements and the public right of way there, or is that, is the applicant going to pay a fee and have the city manage that process?
Well, that's a very good question, I don't know the answer, and maybe Brad knows?
Well, looking at Condition thirty-four, I believe the owner is to design and install the relocation of the existing crosswalk.
I guess that's why I was asking, it seems like a fairly major, even though it's really not, amount of infrastructure, but for a private applicant, yeah, that could be problematic to a certain degree, so it was just a thought.
Well, one thing I would say is that when a project comes forward, if there's any public improvements that are necessary to implement a project, we put that on the backs of the applicant, and they design it, and they implement it, and they have to obviously finance it. It's a pretty minor change to the alignment there, and Public Works has reviewed that extensively for, for its efficiency, so.
I guess because it's crossing both, both lanes of traffic, it seemed like a kind of an interesting realignment, and I was trying to understand, because it only shows the location on our side, on the property side, didn't quite know where it was going to land, because those, that street doesn't, isn't, isn't a perfect square in terms of how that's going to work. It, it was a, probably not even an issue, frankly, but it was interest, I had an interest in knowing how they were going to handle that.
Yeah, I, I don't believe the design has, has been completely vetted yet, we do and have done similar designs in Public Works for other crosswalks, and primarily, I believe the construction cost of a significant part of that is working with the concrete sidewalk, the curb gutter and stuff, within their frontage, which they'd be adjusting as part of their project anyways, as far as the striping across the street, that would be as much less of a cost.
Okay, any other questions of staff, or comments, or a motion? No? You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PA twenty twenty dash zero six zero, as drafted.
You have a second? I'll second. Let's call for a vote. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to item number six, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, twenty twenty-three update, this is citywide.
Sure, I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and introduce this one while McConaughey's getting set here. You know, this is an item that we've, we've been working on for quite some time, we've been back to the Planning Commission with study sessions, and we've even had an ad hoc Committee of Commissioners to be working on this one. We kind of put this one on hold, waiting for the state to finish up their legislative session to see how much changes they would do to the ADU laws, and, and Jaime Maria is still on vacation, we have McConaughey Nova here to help us out, we're going to go through a very high-level summary of the changes, and with that, I'll turn it over to McConaughey. over to McConna.
Thank you, good evening, Commissioners. McConna Nova's senior planner for the Planning Division. So I'm pitch-hitting here for Jaime on the ADU ordinance. So this is, this ordinance is a way to capture the state law amendments that just became effective as of January 1st. And as Jim mentioned, thank you, as Jim mentioned, the ad hoc committee has, consisting of Commissioners Climen, Lowry, and Wigan, met on five different occasions to create recommendations for this ordinance in addition to the state law changes. So, walking quickly, oh, there's the ad hoc committee. Part of the ad hoc committee recommendations were really to focus on not reducing building bulk for the character of our community, to incentivize the ADUs very, very carefully, be careful with the development standards that we do allow, to relax the standards to make sure that we can't walk those back after they're allowed. So, for example, SB 330 requires ADUs to, so that we don't result in the reduction of density, and we want to make sure that when those are, if those sunset later, that we're not creating a density and bulk issue that causes a problem for the city down the line. So, moving on, so the last study session was done on July 7th, and at that time, the Planning Commission had recommended that we incorporate those state law changes before we adopt the ordinance with the ad hoc committee recommendations. Moving on, so some of the changes that we have incorporated in the staff report packet today, we have the ADU matrix. The existing and proposed matrices are provided as attachments three and four to your packet. This matrix is really kind of the go-to document for our staff and for the public when they're just beginning to embark on an application for an ADU. It has the different categories for internal conversions, and detach units for single-family and multi-family, and that's been a great help along the way. So I'm going to walk quickly through the different state law changes that have occurred, the first being the non-conforming conditions, we've strengthened that language to reflect the new state law that suggests that we cannot require non-conforming violations to be corrected as part of the ADU. That's something that can still be required, but it would be on a separate track from the ADU process. The second here listed is the objective standards, we do not, no longer have the ability to impose subjective standards for ADUs, so therefore we've suggested the removal of our subjective language that requires similar architectural styles, colors, and materials for new ADU development. One thing that will help with that is we're pursuing ADU pre-approved plans...